Good evening, everybody. It is November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, seven thirty P. M. This is the mayor and council meeting in the borough of Allendale. Linda, will you please read the Open Public Meetings Act and call the meeting to order?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website. Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Yakarino?
Here.
Councilman Deluiseo?
Here.
Mayor Wazinski?
Here.
Please stand with the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve October twenty-sixth combined work and regular session?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yeah.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Deluiseo?
Yes.
All right, now we're gonna have agenda review. We have introduction of two ordinances, ordinance twenty-three dash seventeen and twenty-three dash eighteen. These are both cleaning up some of our ordinances and cleaning up the names to make everything consistent. They're more of a of a housekeeping type of uh ordinance. And then we have our consent agenda. Mike, did you want to talk about the Allendale Police Department Defense Logistics Agency?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The federal government allows local law enforcement agencies to acquire various items such as unused or gently-used office furniture, electronic equipment generator, non-military vehicles, tools, medical equipment, et cetera. This ordinance will allow us to continue our participation in this book.
Excellent. Uh, we also have a resolution approving execution of an M. O. A. with our P. B. A. over some miscommunication um in the P. B. A. contract, and that's all settled. And we have our bill list that I went through, Suzanne, did you go through that?
Indeed, yep, I did.
Alrighty, and then we have our firefighter authorization to go for a grant. And that is our agenda review. So next, I'd like to open it up for public comment on agenda items only. Not seeing any, I'm gonna bring it back. And first, I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty-three dash seventeen. This is an ordinance for first reading and setting December seventh, seven thirty P. M. for the public hearing. Linda, will you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance twenty-three dash seventeen, an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise the code of the borough of Allendale, officers and employees, chapter fifty-three.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yeah.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Deluiseo?
Yes.
Okay, next ordinance twenty-three dash eighteen. Again, this is also first reading, and the public hearing is set for December seventh, seven thirty P. M. Linda, please read ordinance twenty-three dash eighteen.
Ordinance twenty-three dash eighteen, an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise the code of the borough of Allendale, officers and employees, chapter fifty-three. The hearing date for ordinance twenty-three dash eighteen is December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven thirty P. M., or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yeah.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Deluiseo?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved, Homan.
Second, Lovasolo.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yeah.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Deluiseo?
I wanted to abstain on twenty-three, two forty, too. Please, thank you.
All right, next council report, Councilman Ed O'Connell, do you have a council report?
Uh, yes, real quick, I just wanted to thank everybody for the mayor council and the Republican Club for doing everything they could for the election and my running mate Joe. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody that came out and supported us. Uh, as far as D. P. W., you saw the uh report from Ron. Uh, looks like D. P. W. will be able to do some transfers later this month to fill in the gaps in other areas, and we are going to have uh our recycling center open, and the last day will be the last Sunday in December to get everything in. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Councilman Deluiseo?
Well, yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to second Ed's. It's thank you, um, it's, this was my first time running for a public election, and it's a very humbling experience. Uh, this past year being appointed to fill the seat has been, you know, an honor, and I want to thank the people of Allendale who voted for Ed and myself and entrusting us, and I can, just alls I can say is I'm gonna give everything I have to continue to help this community be the best and wonderful place that it is, and I really, really do care about this community, so I want to thank everybody for supporting me.
Well, thank you, you've already done so much in the short time you've been here, so we appreciate you.
Well, thank you for that. That's the reason I'm here, right, gotta work. So the land use committee met this morning. Uh, we had a relatively short meeting with a very short agenda. Uh, one item that I want to mention to the public, so the holiday observers and Vico Sanchez, who's one of our holiday observer members, uh, we're gonna start some repairs, very needed repairs on the grandstand facility. Uh, for years, the holiday observers used the grandstand to store materials. Uh, there's been a lot of leaks and water issues with the grandstand, so uh, with money raised, the holiday observers, we're gonna do some voluntary repairs starting tomorrow. We're gonna redo the seats and some of the items on the sides to enhance the structure. So just to let everybody know that.
Wonderful.
One of the items we discussed this morning was a so a new ordinance to to our code to allow for and and put language in place for people who requiring handicap ramps on their homes or loved ones or relatives. So we're working on that, I'll tweak that, I should have something for next meeting. Uh, we did start the project, uh Crescent Place, that was mentioned in our last meeting. Uh, half the project was completed, the roadwork with the asphalt paving is completed, it looks very, very nice. I'm glad they got that done so quickly before the asphalt plant shut around November. And then there's a little bit more grading work that still needs to be done on the out to enhance the drainage, and that should be scheduled in the next couple of weeks and get that complete. And one smaller item, our borough engineer, Mike Reeland, is also reviewing some of our language in our variance package to try to make things a little bit easier for our residents who are coming for very minor tweaks to their variance in their homes. So he's looking at that. And that's, that's pretty much it, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lovasolo?
Um, I just want to also congratulate Councilmen Deluiseo and O'Connell on their victory. Um, it's been great to serve with you guys. Um, you're very hardworking, and so I really appreciate being your second on land use. Um, it's been, it's been fun, even this morning was fun.
Even?
Even. It's seven thirty. Um, and I also want to congratulate our Director of Operations, Ron Kistner, on his win as the new mayor of Hasbrook Heights.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so uh, we've been really busy with H. R. and admin. Um, and hopefully, December meeting, I'll have a a big report. Um, I do try and at least report out once a month on what's going on with our library. I am um on the board along with the mayor. Um, so I'm just gonna give a very quick update from um our library director, Nancy Claus. Um, in November, the library is celebrating D- November in the children's area. Activities include a Dino-Rama craft on the fourteenth, a dinosaur dig activity on November twenty eighth, uh twentieth, a Dino Extravaganza Storytime on the twenty-first, and a D. I. Y. Dino Egg Program on November twenty-seventh. In addition to a regular Storytimes and Read-to-Therapy Dog Programs, they have a very special Diwali celebration planned for November thirteenth. And then in our Adult and Family Programs, um, there is a brush painting program on November fourteenth, and an author talk and book signing featuring Dr. Jolene Aras, a local psychologist. Dr. Jolene will be discussing her book, Why on Earth Do I Feel This Way? Thinking maybe I should go to that one. Um, our Adult Take and Make Craft this month features a recipe and materials to make breadsticks to serve or to give as a gift for Thanksgiving. As always, a complete list of all the programs are on the library website. And that is it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Homan?
Hi. Uh, first of all, yes, congratulations, Ed, congratulations, Joe. Joe, I know you've worked alongside Amy on on uh two-ten, two-ten.
Two-ten.
And have been just an unbelievable partner, so thank you so much for wanting to do so much work. It's well appreciated by it, by not only us on the council, but the borough of Allendale. So thanks, and welcome back to both of you. Um, as far as water and sewer, um, I really continue to be pleased with the work that Violia is doing in Allendale. Uh, temporary treatment vessels were delivered on November first, as opposed to Halloween, on November first to the West Crescent Well, and you'll see they're building a little shed-type area to um begin to have that temporary treatment put in place, and they hope that it will actually be in place uh by the end of this year, so that would be phenomenal. It's great news for every resident P. F. O. S. is something that we've definitely been um very concerned about, and this is a great step forward, and they're working towards getting the approvals for the permanent facility, which will eventually be down um somewhere around in New Street area. Uh, then additionally, there's legislation that's out there that people may or may not be aware of called the Lead and Copper Rule, and the Lead and Copper Rule requires that a water system be able to identify all of the makeup of the service lines to every home. And when we owned the system, that was a very daunting task to think, and it was like a certain percentage, but we had like eighteen hundred unknown lines. And Ron Kistner and the rest of the Allendale team has coordinated with P. S. E. and G., and while those roads are being dug up for P. S. E. and G. to replace the miles of gas piping, which is also an advantage to Allendale residents, um, they did the test pits which need to be done to look at what the makeup is of that service line. And if there is a galvanized or lead line found, Violia will ha- have that actually changed out. So um, they've done three hundred in combination with what P. S. E. and G. has been doing. There still will probably be another thousand residents that need to have a test pit dug, so I guess what I'd be asking residences and also our Chief of Police saying thank you for being patient with the coordination that sometimes, obviously, that takes up some street space, but it's a program that is really in place to protect residents, not only here in Allendale, but throughout the state of New Jersey. And uh, as far as the sewers go, we're still working on some details with contracts with both Saddle River, we have a meeting tomorrow morning, and um with Ramsey, so hopefully I'll have some finality to those contracts being updated. My goal was by the end of the year, and I am determined to at least get fifty percent done.
Good, good.
So that's it.
Thanks. Chair Wazinski?
Thanks.
Um, okay.
O'Toole?
Thank you very much. Uh, first, congratulations to Ed, Joe, and Ron on their victories the other day. Um, in fact, on Tuesday, the Public Safety Committee met. Uh, we discussed our plans to keep everyone safe during the upcoming Holiday Walk, which is gonna be, I think, the first?
December second.
December second. Um, and we had a minor issue with the new speed sign on McIntyre. It has to do with the uh, you know, the solar panels, so that's all being addressed. Uh, various roadway striping will be completed next week, including Coach Franklin Turnpike and Chestnut Street.
Don't they?
That. Uh, the Fire and Police Departments are preparing yet next year's budgets to present to the Finance Committee. Uh, and the, on our consent agenda was the uh resolution for a grant for the Fire Department to um apply for the grant to purchase a special washer and dryer for their turnout gear, which washer and dryer for turnout gear is about thirty-five thousand dollars. So.
They don't have them at Home Depot?
They do not have them at Home Depot. And uh, just yesterday, Chief Dylan and I participated in a meeting with a company that makes flood abatement equipment to see if any of their products could help with some of the flooding issues that we've seen in town, so. Uh, more on that in the future. That's all I got.
Great, thank you very much. Councilman Yakarino?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had a couple of, well, first of all, I wanted to mention, congratulations, of course, to Ed and Joe. It's a pleasure to serve with both of you, and also we know that Ron is not here this evening, uh but of course, congratulations to him. Um, this week, we started from the committee's purview with an A. S. A. meeting in the conference room. Uh, we discussed a number of things with regard to field maintenance, um, the weather events that we've been having, and the lasting effects that have been left from the fields. Um, we're also gonna be following up with Ron with regard to winter preparations, whether we'll be using any turf blankets, considering the condition of such. Um, and then also, as Ron is retiring, we're also going to be scheduling a special A. S. A. meeting in January to meet with the new Director of Operations, whoever that may be. Um, so that way, we're going into the spring season, off to a strong start, and everybody's on the same page with regards to fields. Wednesday morning, we had a Facilities Committee with myself, Councilman Deluiseo, and Mayor Wazinski. We discussed a number of our open projects, as well as different policies that we may be looking to put in place for different uh room uses within Borough Hall. Um, in addition, like I said, we followed up on matters discussed at the A. S. A. meeting with regards to fields and weather conditions and so forth. Um, and then with regard to some of our open projects, I did follow up with the contractor with regard to the concession stand. Um, we are on target to have more news regarding that in December, once the contract is officially awarded, once the funds are able to be encumbered. Um, finally, with regard to the kitchen and the flooring, there's been progress that's been continually been made, um, but I'm following up with the third contractor with regards to finalizing the quote for that, and I did speak with another flooring vendor today, so that we are on track to finish that up very soon.
Great, that's great, all right.
Thank you.
Some staff report. Our Claire, Linda?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Election Day went well, thank you to the board workers, John Gill, Amanda Richards, oh, Kim Oliveri, and the Allendale Police Department. I also want to thank the super board workers, Joseph Brennan, Ally Zambrada, and Bruce Davis. They were amazing, and I asked if they would come back for the primary. The next mayor and council meeting is December seventh, and I also want to congratulate uh Ed, Joe, and Ron.
Perfect, thank you. Chief Dylan?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, working with various police partners on some shared service possibilities, uh, working on a few endorsement initiatives around town, and collaborating with the Allendale School District on equal safety and security. I'd like to recognize superintendent Dr. Bart Papon, who has been a steadfast partner in ensuring the safety of one of our most vulnerable, vulnerable populations, our children.
Excellent, thank you very much. Our attorney, Ray Webb.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, Ed, and Ron in absentia, obviously, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's well deserved, and I look forward to working with you. Um, just brief report is uh working uh over the last two weeks uh on some personnel matters. Uh, our new administrative officer is certainly very, very diligent, a great, a great choice, and she hasn't hesitated to to call up when she's grappling with something in the first instance and asking, you know, asking the questions, and uh, you know, we've been working together, I think, very well. Chief and I have had a couple of personnel matters to deal with as well. Uh, most of the time has been on the matters that Councilwoman Homan is referring to. Uh, we spent about an hour today on the phone with uh Violia and their attorneys, uh, mostly focused again on easements and encroachments. Um, little by little, we're getting those in place. We are hopeful that we will have the appraisal of the easements uh done a week from Monday. We were given a thirty-day estimate, I think Monday is twenty-one days, so uh, you know, we're getting there. Once we have that, then we can proceed with green acres. I, I, I think we'll get all the other pieces, or I shouldn't put a timeline on it, but most of the other pieces in place by the end of the year, and and the lingering one, which is not a small one, is gonna be, you know, green acres, and that'll obviously require some further discussion with the governing body in terms of how to ultimately address the uh the green acres issue. And as Councilwoman Homan said, uh, tomorrow morning, uh, we're meeting with uh Saddle River on uh their sewer agreement, so we've spent a little bit of time going back and forth with Saddle River. Uh, they have a developer who is, uh, I guess, leading to the need to hook up to our sewers uh as part of their fair share housing obligation, so uh I anticipate an interesting discussion tomorrow morning.
As soon as I can.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, and I'll do get my report real quickly. Um, as Councilwoman Lovasolo mentioned, there's been just lots of activity going on with all the departments, so we are changing the organizational design of the borough, we're changing positions around a little bit. It's all for the better, offered to better serve the residents, streamlining things better, trying to get everything up and automated as possible. We um currently are now are accepting credit cards um for our dog licenses, as I think we've mentioned, things like that, um, we're looking to do, also cleaning up a lot of our files, there's a lot of filing cabinets in there. We're going to streamline all that to make the um office a nice place for our employees to work, as well as residents to visit. So two-ten West Crescent, our community center, um, it's lots of activity, about a million emails in the past couple days, so that's really uh getting kicked off. I look forward to seeing that built, I will be posting on Facebook. I'm gonna try to take a picture of like the same spot, so we can kind of see the timeline going forward. I have a feeling it's gonna be done very, very quickly, so we're looking potentially, you know, this summer to be able to do a ribbon cutting. Um, thank you to all the residents um for all of the traffic detours. Um, we know it's challenging, but as Councilwoman Homan mentioned, it is so important, all these upgrades are very, very important, and it would be ten times worse if we didn't have to go through this. So we really appreciate um the patience from the residents and also the due diligence of our police department. Um, it is not easy because things change constantly, they get told one thing, and then something else happens, and something else happens. So they've been actually on top of it and doing a super great job, honestly, very, very few complaints, and it's usually the same people, so. Um, I just wanted to uh thank the staff for all the work they did on Election Day, that was a big, long day. Um, and also the work you did in the food drive, that was super, um, it was a food drive that they all started, and um got a lot of food for the the food bank, which is always in need at this time of year. Um, correction, the Holiday Walk is Friday, December first, not the second. And um, I did want to mention that Veterans Day is this November eleventh. This day honors all our military veterans, um, it's always on the eleventh hour, on the eleventh day, in the eleventh month. So um, our veterans now, um, unfortunately, um, we've merged with with Ramsey, so they will be having the ceremony. We may not be having our ceremony this year, but I did want to just mention that. Um, that Veterans Day is November eleventh, so remember that. And congratulations, of course, to our two councilmen who will be serving for another three years. Thank you very much, and also, of course, to our Director of Operations, who is now going to be the new mayor of Hasbrook Heights. And that, I think, is it for me. So now, next, I would like to ask if there's any unfinished business? Any new business? Now, um, I ask if anybody from the public would like to come and speak on any matter? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Joe Delfino, I live at sixty-two Chestnut Street.
Three minutes, remember three minutes.
Yes, three minutes. Um, I want to, um, I didn't want to take anybody else's time, but it's, I'll take the three minutes. Um, I'm in search of, uh, first of all, thank you for the striping uh issue being taken care of, you are the people that we have to go to because um you get things done. Uh, same thing with the foliage that was cut on uh Chestnut Street and also on Crescent, and which has helped uh people um navigate the street. So here, I need to talk to you, I need one person on the council, or maybe or more, to be an advocate for Chestnut Street rather than an adversary. Um, the traffic island that I brought up, the the reason for safety of the traffic island, Allendale already has a traffic island where the lock, the clock is in the center of town and Curly Shore's uh plaque, and that, that island was there not just for decoration, but that island is there because it's going to route the traffic around that the center of town and make it safe. That's what we need at Chestnut Street. Um, Chestnut Street is the opening between Chest uh Chestnut Street and Franklin Turnpike is two and a half times the width of the entrance to Orchard Street going east on Orchard Street before the Police Department. And the reason I bring that up is because the excuse that was used, why there isn't an island, is because of the snow plow. So uh, just recently, the Waldwick Department, D. P. W., had their orange or yellow uh leaf plow that had to go up Chestnut Street, then turn right and go down through uh um Franklin Turnpike, south towards Waldwick. So that plow is a perfect example of its size. So a snow plow is not the excuse that should be used for not having an island on um at Chestnut Street and Franklin Turnpike. Um, I have a picture, I, I took a picture of a, an example of an island that existed in another town, yes.
I don't understand why is the, what was the example? I'm trying to like visualize what you're talking about, tell me, what was the example of the truck?
The truck is a D. P. W. truck?
Right. We don't have an island now, though.
We don't have an island.
Right, so he didn't have to obstruct an island.
It was, the, the space was wide enough.
Because we don't have an island.
Well, it's before the Yelp, there's a, there's a triangle of, there's a form of a triangle of striping that's at Chestnut Street and Franklin Turnpike. It's orange, it's the only striping that's on that, south of of uh Franklin Turnpike. That truck was able to go to the right and what did not come anywhere near the, this, the striping that's exist here. But maybe just this, maybe you have to take a trip down there, you know, take a look at what I'm, what I'm talking about. Um, but I found an island, and I'd like to share it with a picture with with anyone that's willing to take a look at it, that it doesn't even have to be this, this large. But if someone wants to put, I don't know how to do this, but put it on someone's phone, but here's an is- an island that is already, it's in this area of Ridgewood by the Duck Pond, and it's a perfect example of what's needed, and it's not a major expense. We're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, it's, it's, it's just uh cement. And instead of having dirt there, you could have uh, you know, have stones there, so that people going from one part of Franklin Turnpike to the other part of Franklin Turnpike, crossing Chestnut Street, can stop. But at the same time, you're protecting about the traffic. The traffic that turns going north from Franklin Turnpike and turns left on Chestnut Street, they are actually on the other side, they are on the exit side of Chestnut Street.
So Mr. W., you know, the, the county engineer, the borough engineer, the county safety inspector, they've all looked at that intersection. They've all examined it many, many times. You've come to us many, many times regarding the same thing. It was decided by the expert that there will not be an island, it's not just, just because of the snow plowing issue, that's an issue, but it's an ancillary issue. It's not necessary for safety, according to them, it's been looked at already. We're going to put stripes there, and I have to rely on the experts. You're not a traffic expert, I'm not a traffic expert, so that's why we have all these traffic experts.
I didn't know that they, that you had any kind of, I asked for.
I'm getting emails going back from when you brought this up, you know, ma- many times, so I, I just, you know, I appreciate that you want it to be safe there, we, we, oh, safety is always utmost important, but we have uh, we have consulted with our experts, and we, we're, we're going to put a stripe, um, a stripe.
Safety.
Safety.
We're gonna refresh.
And it's all, it's gonna be refreshed there, and it's also gonna have some reflective uh paint on it.
Glass beads.
Glass beads on it.
I'm very happy to hear that.
Yeah.
That's very nice, and I just, I'm, my only concern is Russian roulette. That they are, these people, let me, let me finish, I'm, I'm not arguing with you, I, I appreciate what you've done. My, my concern is that if I'm the only one that's been concerned about this from the people that live on the street, so to speak, I wish I had known about any kind of meetings that were going on, so I could at least sit, or maybe I could be privy to what the experts say about this street. You know, I, I just didn't know anything about that, but I'm saying that this I'm saying that they may, they may have their expertise, they may be reluctant, and I think that that's happened when I had to deal with Herndon, and I had to deal with Sherb, when I tried to go through the, at least the Police Department at that particular time, and or maybe town council members in private meetings, there may be a reluctance to try to put something there that would be more helpful, that may be more helpful than what you have planned, but I have to backtrack, and let's wait to see how, how, how the improvements that you're going to do.
Okay.
On Chestnut Street, I'm willing, I'm willing to say, well, great, you know.
Um, I think it's happening next week.
Now, I just wondered, do you have the plans, is there, are there uh printout plans of what the striping is going to be?
It's, it's refreshing what is there right now, there's striping there that, that's there right now, and it's going to be refreshed, but it's gonna have reflections on it.
Are we gonna have this, the crosswalks for the, for the bus drops north and south?
No, I, I guess.
Cross Franklin Turnpike?
Cross Franklin Turnpike.
Yeah.
Again, we're, we're, we're not, no, I mean, this is
No, just cross chest.
Something that our traffic
Just tra-
Yeah, yeah.
Is that because, because it's only Allendale's responsibility, or is it because the crosswalks are the county responsibility?
So if it's a county road, it's the county responsibility, but it's, it's um, it's not something that we, we're not just putting, we don't just put crosswalks
I understand.
you know, anywhere. It, there's, there's patterns that are looked at. So again, we leave this stuff up to our, our experts and the traffic experts. So I appreciate that you want one there and, and, you know, that's great, but
And I, and this is why I'm saying about experts.
Yeah.
You're, this is why you're put in a bad situation from, from my perspective.
Okay.
If the experts are the ones that did this, they must have been the ones who had all of the traffic patterns done
Is there, is there a question?
Street north to Ramsey. All the crosswalks and everything that was that, now who did that, number one? Who did that? Because south of roof, south of Orchard Street to Waldwick, there are zero.
Okay, well, those are
That's why, that's why I'm here.
Allendale is our, what we, what we're
But that's why I'm not, I'm not here to, I'm just saying, you might, you might want to, someone might, I'm asking for someone on the council or the police department, someone to find out, you know, who's responsible for putting us in a situation where we're talking about why is it that north of roof, uh, north of Orchard Street has twelve and south of Orchard Street have zero?
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and effort. I hope there's an advocate somewhere. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Holman. Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.